We had it back.
Roll call, please.
There for those.
Here.
Angela.
Here.
This is Bigfield.
Yeah.
This is Creed.
Here.
This is Erwin.
Yeah.
This is Erwin.
Yeah.
This is Mary.
Here.
Notice that this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News and Currenter News file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please stand for the first of the tickets. I'm going to be the one who will be the skip something like that. And actually, I'll just stand. One nation, under God, in this whole good little team and justice. Welcome to the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Borough Hall, and it is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the Borough Clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time for if they made any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their names and addresses before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and what, or the audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and/or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. All right. Just one little change in agenda before we do the presentation. I would open for a brief open session because we have a parent who needs to get to a
Soccer banquet.
Soccer banquet and soccer team.
It's in process now.
Yeah. So Kathleen, go ahead.
Hi, Kathleen Williams, Miami Brown half river in Burnsville. A quick update, I'm talking here to talk about the stormwater drain and stormwater flowing out to my property. So the rate has been covered, however, there's been no formal progress communicated to me and a plan on the unauthorized drainage. Ms. Mule informed me the email, the project exceeds four hundred thousand dollars, another fifty thousand on my property, but I get no details. All communication via email, I was told she wants to handle it over email and does not meet with me in person. They may have the money from another project to pass it to it in the first quarter, may not. Otherwise, it has to go before the budget next spring. I can't wait that long trying to move, trying to sell my property. And I was also told about an old adage, government moves slowly. Well, I would have preferred to sit down at this meeting, and I have it in writing, you can see the email, the R C C, government moves slowly. I would prefer to sit down and work through a nice satisfactory, you know, issue, but I've been told no, they want to handle it over email. Hence, with no firm commitment to resolve, I'm officially serving the borough of Burnsville via the mayor, Ms. Mule, and the thing, a cease and desist order. You have ten days to resolve this, or I will be Hold on, I know I have to go back. But I'm serving everyone, including this sort of email, so everyone is served. Okay. So now, every board member, the mayor, and Ms. Mule have been served a cease and desist for unauthorized stormwater drainage onto my property. You have ten calendar days, on Friday, November twenty-fourth, I will be sealing it shut and burying it and dealing with any further actions to recoup those costs and damages. Please take this seriously, this is not a joke. I'm attempting to sell my property, and I'm not going to wait till next June. So I will fix it next Friday, if you don't meet with me, we come up with a plan that needs to. Okay, that's all I do, thank you for your time.
So I will close the open session and and it's all yours.
Hello.
May.
Um, I'm Mary Graham Daly, and all you know, the younger library director in town. And I wanted to present to you our strategic plan, Anthony has some slides that he's gonna put up that illustrates the key points of the longer document that I passed out to your seats. And thank you for your time and this opportunity to share what's going on in the library. We're very glad to have open and transparent conversations about what we're doing and what you need. And the things that I wanted to share tonight are our strategic plan, our process, our values and vision, and there's more in the document that embellishes it, and I'm of course glad to have questions at the end. If you can go to more slides ahead, Anthony. This is well covered tonight. Some of our goals are primarily our goals, we're going in order one, two, five, one, two, three, five, four, just because it made a little more sense that way. And to start off, I think you could go to the next slide. We had a fairly involved process to complete the strategic plan. The state library requires you to have one on file that's three to five years long. We had pretty much a year of work towards this and a survey that was a few months prior. We use I M L S Reapster, that's the Institute of Museum and Library Science, that's the federal agency that tracks library data, which are New Jersey State Library funnels towards them. We use regional comparisons, we talked to our staff, we talked to community focus groups, and our board worked primarily Nancy Virgoon, thank you, and John Bertoni and Mark Crook and formerly Skip Forza, who has moved downtown. We're the planning committee that put this plan together for us to share and execute. Maybe that's how it goes. So there's a great book that I love that if any of you want to borrow, feel free to go ahead, called More Than Just a Place to Go. And it's about serving children primarily, but it really applies to our many diverse groups in town. Like, we're not just a building, we're not just the stuff inside it. We have a place for new parents to connect and help to help each other. We are a place that empowers seniors to age in place, we're a place that supports learning, everything from teaching two-year-olds how to put the blue stick cap back on at the end to build their character, to helping someone who doesn't want to drive at night anymore learn to use the Uber app on their phone and download it and get it together. So we're trying to be a lot of things to a lot of different groups and a lot of individuals, and we're doing it. We're doing it with breadth and we're doing it at a wonderful scale. If you, I'll go to the next slide. We have our basics of what we're doing every day, day in, day out, we're running a great library, we're offering a lot of great things as a library. Um, go to the next slide. But we are particularly focusing on goals that focus on these five themes. And go to the next slide. So not just Burnsville, but historically, like, I think every library I've ever known or been involved with has been sort of bad at marketing. And we know that we have a lot of great things, and as a librarian generally, but also in this town, you tell, and I've told many of you, like, hey, we do this, and you hear all sorts of things at dinner, like, wouldn't it be great if the library could do this? Two thousand, I keep books, I'm gonna be around my candle now, oh, we do that. So we're trying to get the word out to communicate, but also to seek feedback from the community. We have diverse communities, if you go to the next slide. We have so many different groups that I can't even list them all, we have sixteen percent seniors, twenty-five, twenty-seven percent of our town is youth. I think it's twenty-six percent are Latino, we have different ethnic groups, we have different economic groups, we have different ages, we have different interests. So we have to approach all of these groups from different angles, and if you go to the next slide. We are already working towards this goal, and we're, I would really say my staff is knocking it out of the ballpark with print materials, with our website, with social media on many different platforms, and particularly with our website to reach everyone throughout all of our communities as best we can and to connect them to our services, and to make sure we're offering the services they want. Go to the next slide. Which brings us to, like, our stuff is a big part of the picture, our collection is great, we have tens of thousands of wonderful things. They're used robustly, we have over a hundred thousand circulation of items in a year. And it's increasing each month, like, there was a dip with COVID, but compared to our main partners and our region twelve, the Institute for Museum and Library Studies, the federal agency, puts us in region twelve, there's like fifty-six regions. We have more circulation than a lot of folks. So if you go to the next slide. We have our big stuff, this is, you know, you can see that our thirty-nine thousand fiction and nonfiction items, those are paper items, our forty-four thousand youth items. Even though youth are only twenty-seven percent of our circulation, or twenty-seven percent of our population, they account for fifty-six percent of our paper circulation. And we have even more electronic circulation on top of that, we have tons of ebooks going out on a daily basis, we have tons of audiobooks going out, and people are very happy with those services. If you go over the next slide. And our fantastic collection is just amplified by our participation in Maine, we share very closely with forty-nine libraries and broadly with most libraries in the country. We have three million items that are generally available almost as fast as Amazon for check-in. So we are serving and we're excited to do it, and we're trying to make sure that our collection is responsive and evolving to what people are demanding. One big hole in our collection was electronic newspapers, if you go to the next slide. And that area, we rolled out the Wall Street Journal. And in the middle of October, these are just the October statistics, in the middle of October, the New York Times has already had almost fourteen hundred circulation of articles, so I expect that when we compare our November numbers, that the Times and the Journal will be more equal. But people have been very happy to have these items, that they can just log in with their library card and get it completely free. If you could go to the next slide. Programming is really big to us because it's really big to our community. It's what people have said over and over again they want, and you know we're great at it. But being great at it means completely staying on top of it at all times, so go to the next slide. These are our peer libraries in the first two charts. You can see that we did in two thousand and twenty-one, we did around three hundred programs, our peer libraries did around two hundred in that year. This past year, just through October, we have had over four hundred programs. And by the end of December, we expect to be close to five hundred. So this encompasses all sorts of things, that encompasses the Girl Scouts having little programs, that encompasses homeowners association meetings, ESL classes that do twice a week. But it's, we think probably one of the key things that people are looking for when they're trying to understand what we have, and is it something that interests them? Ooh, the next slide. Because it's so critical to our community, we've had great success, we've had also like interesting and unique variety of things. We've had our tomato tasting is in the lower nut can corner there. Our ESL class has been a fabulous partnership with the Somerset County Chamber Court Commissioners, the Greater Workforce Development Bureau, and the Literacy Volunteers of America. That's a quarter million dollar program that has been spread amongst six libraries, I think, and we got to be one of them, we had quite really hard to be one of them. And we still can't even serve everyone with that, we had twenty spots in that ESL class, and there were forty-nine applicants. So we're really proud that we're offering it, but we're still dissatisfied and striving to do better, we connected a lot of those individuals who couldn't get to this class with tutoring services through the literacy volunteers and through other classes that might be offered in Brown Brook for those who have transportation. But it's something that we're really working hard at and going to continue to work on. And next, our facility goal, that's number five in your handout. We want to keep pace with the building systems, you've heard so much about our restroom projects. We want to maximize its opportunities. If you go down, you can skip two slides. There are wish lists throughout this community that people have. You heard a lot about that in our strategic focus groups. People definitely want more meeting space, it's a post-COVID figure demand, and it says people come more to Zoom and people have more remote work and more remote meetings, don't have to go to New York City, they want meeting space. There's a lot of talk about coffee, there's a lot of big feelings about coffee. But there's also more opportunities for learning, there's STEM equipment people would like us to have, there's parking that people really need on busy days, like, just talking like Wednesday and Thursday when Miss G has programs, like, we're out of parking when I get there, she starts at nine thirty. So we're doing what we can and we intend to do what we can, but we're also just enjoying what we have and doing the most we can. If you go to the next slide. Our last one that I'm finishing with is community. We have, like I said, a variety of individuals and a variety of populations. And we want everyone in Burnsville to thrive, and we are a partner in just about every way that someone wants to do that, be it someone who's in the business community, someone who has retired, someone who's raising their kids here, one of those kids who are here. We have a lot to offer them, we've had, if you go to the next slide. We're game when recreation has a mudslide, to have Easter egg puns in the library. We're supporting our local businessmen, we have fun concerts all the time, we have fun movies, we have educational programs, if you go to the next slide. We have coffee with the cop, we have trivia at the pool, the library doesn't just exist in our walls, it's throughout this whole community, it's on your Kindle, and it's going all the way. So we're not looking to just, like, say we're part of the community, we're here and we're in everybody else's meetings and conversing with the other stakeholders that we can to try and really be what the community wants. And we're continuing to do that through, again, this really ties into communication. So thank you very much for your time and this opportunity, and thank you, library champions, for turning out. You guys have any questions about this strategic plan or other environmental resources?
No, I was on one in one of the focus groups, I forget which, I think community, no, community.
Yeah.
Yeah. And really, you guys did a great job on the way that you ran those focus groups, I think we got a lot of great ideas, a lot of sharing, really very impressive. Thank you so much for investing the time to really put this together.
Thank you.
Chad.
We've had a lot of conversations, you said something early on which my ears are tripping, I want to clarify something.
What's that?
You said that we try to give everything to everybody, which I applaud, it's a terrible business model. The thing that I heard, and it's just trying to crystallize what the library is, it's about the circulation, which is clear, but it's really about community organization as well as activities.
Yeah, and like, we are not businessmen, we're your public servants. And we are not in it to make money, but we are in it to steward your money, we're trying to make most of every dollar. But we have big responsibilities, especially our early childhood program to, I'm not really just joking about, like, you can teach a kid to put the cap back on their blue stick, you're raising a responsible citizen. If you have a place where teenagers can go to volunteer or to have fun and play laser tag, they are not getting into trouble, and they're growing, and there are a lot of people who come to us most days just to use the computers or come to any adult program we have, and a lot of our adults live on their own, that we're a place where you get a smiling face from Flora, or, you know, you get advice on what to read next, but we're also just a place to be together. Wherever people connect, we have our loneliness, and we support our mental health here, community too.
So I applaud you, you do a great job.
Thanks.
When you come for a budget conversation, can you categorize the community activities that you're sponsoring, it would help contextualize, you mentioned four hundred, right, they have some categories.
Sure.
Yes, all the different things, just help to clarify and categorize that.
Sure, a lot of them are supported by our friends, like, a lot of the more fun and expensive ones, like our concerts or our wine tasting, actually, the wine tasting has a sponsor from the friends, but a lot of them are supported by the friends, the ones that are, and I'll give you more of a rundown. Our early childhood programs, our adult, you know, Delmona train coming in to play games on table top four games. To our ESL is a partnership, we open the doors and that's a huge asset to them, you know, we don't pay anything for that instructor, but that instructor is going to be paid decently and just qualified and capable because of our partnership, it's not a set camera, so it's murky, but I'll try to leave that out.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
One comment and question from sitting in the meetings, I was real impressed with how the library is connected with the school district, we had the acting superintendent on the board, and then the new superintendent started joining the meetings, which I think is great, I don't think it's something that maybe we know enough about, but I think it's great to see that connection. One question I do have on that is, have you guys connected with the English programs at the different schools in terms of having books in circulation that are going to be coming up so the students are able to check out, like, specifically those books?
Yeah, we, so we offer a lot of the ancillary AP reading, and we do that in communication with the ELA teachers. We support the summer reading, there's suggested books for summer reading, but more than any specific book, like, we are a fully functioning proper public library. And kids need to be able to choose their individual things, they're all so different, and they all have different interests, and you want them to find that book that speaks to them or that, you know, if they hate to read, they can just get through because they're reading biography about a basketball star. You know, they all need something different, and we offer that collection that's diverse because of that. So we coordinate with them, we're also coordinating for a project that's coming up called Ola Burnsville to try and connect with the families who are more disconnected from our services and from other services throughout town, so we're meeting with a bunch of people from the school, we're meeting the folks from various nonprofits we're inviting, we're inviting you to have an articulation to figure out how we can reach better on social media, how we can bring people in, how we can educate people to what their rights are and what services we can bring them, so that those kids are better served.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, I think if I just add on to that, the marketing idea is actually really good because each school has Friday folders.
Yeah.
And you can advertise, if you will, and then bring them to your pages.
Yeah.
That's where I saw the laser tag stuff.
Yeah, that's where Christine puts tons of stuff in. She tries to, like, limit it to one big thing at a time, so she has her, you know, there's whatever goes out on Friday, but that also gets with the Friday folder. And she caters it to the age group of each school, so she's been completely on top of that since she started doing that.
Yeah, there's a Somerset Hills folder also, so that has more generic stuff in it, it's not school necessarily.
Oh, maybe we're.
We'll listen to that, sounded like. She was about to.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time and all of your supporters for helping. And there's cookies over there. Okay, so now I'll go back to the open session, if anyone in the public would like to make a comment. Either on Zoom or here.
We have Aaron Duff.
Darren.
Hi, thank you. Aaron Duff, fifty-one Crestview Drive. Just a quick thanks to Fran, she does a great job at the library, we love the library, so thank you for all you do. I wanted to comment briefly on the resolution regarding the special law enforcement officer, the police officer for Far Hills Country Day School. So first I heard about it, I was reading the agenda for tonight, I'm not sure, obviously, it's been discussed before because you have a whole contract laid out, but I just have a lot of questions about it, I'm not really sure why, something that the Burnsville Borough is looking into doing, obviously, school safety is, you know, a huge concern. But I just, you know, don't really know why that's a role that Burnsville is getting into, you know, providing police officers for a private school out of the borough. I just, you know, I think in that contract, there's a lot of potential liability for the borough. I don't see anything in there about defend and hold harmless agreements from Far Hills Country Day. If the police officer does something he shouldn't or doesn't do something he should, a parent sues. Is the borough going to be left on the hook for that? Potential employment actions by that new employee against the borough? Are we being defended and identified for that? And, you know, I just really not sure why would be Burnsville and not Far Hills that would be hiring this new employee and providing it to the private school within their borough that they receive tax money from. And I guess, you know, where does it end, what if we get a request from Willow Cottage, Gil St. Bernard's, Allwood, Pangry, Pack, I don't know, you know, why Far Hills Country Day? And why just Far Hills Country Day and not anybody else? Just seems like, I don't know, kind of came out of left field and not really sure what the justification is, so thanks for listening.
Do you jack to answer that, or me to?
Yes, I can answer that, first of all, Far Hills Country Day, despite his name is in Burnsville. Yeah. Second, it's pursuant to state law, we also provide a sale for senior students. And they are paying for it.
Yeah, right.
And it was a request.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they actually requested it, and I know it's confusing because the name is foreign, but it is.
Exactly, Aaron, can you hear that?
Did you hear Jack's comments?
Yeah.
I did hear that, thank you, totally my mistake, I didn't, did not understand that Far Hills Country Day School was actually in Burnsville, and I guess we we are the borough that they pay taxes to, they said they do pay taxes, but that's my mistake, thank you for clarifying that. But also, is that, does that just mean then, Mr. Pigeon, is that pursuant to law that we have to provide a a law enforcement officer to any private school within our municipality that asks for it?
We don't have to, by law, for the municipality, and the council has decided to provide, as I said, the same, and for those countries.
And they pay for it, Aaron, and they do all the whole.
Okay, I understand this, so yeah, I guess that would be my only then comment would be, you know, is that, are those issues the, you know, potential liability coverage there? Because, I mean, unfortunately, in the, you know, insane times we live in, you're talking about potential, you know, serious liability if anything were to occur that we should just be covered for, so thank you for clarifying that, I'm sorry for my mistake, I should have looked into that more closely.
Stand gently as a parent, so the way the law is written, the schools have to raise the fund and pay for them themselves, and then the town has to provide it through, I guess, a approved police department, so it's the way that the laws are in place.
We recently had residents here come seeing, presenting to parent association, talking about, I was informed to them.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
And it has to be a certified officer under the domain of a department.
Anyone else in the public which can be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public session. Well, moving on to ordinances, I believe the planning board has not yet reviewed the detached accessory dwellings that's scheduled for Thursday for the planning board. So do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
I would continue the level hearing on ordinance, I'm pretty definitely going to use November twenty-seventh at seven twenty. As we are really preparing for the presentation, I'll stop.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I have a question. Can we give them recommendations or some flash on it, or does that come after they?
After they come back?
Yeah, they'll come back to us with their recommendation, they don't ask for it.
Yeah. Well, always a measure again.
So who has the draft that we have? Right, that was in our tackle this time? Did that go through the helping committee?
Came from housing, came from them originally.
Came from housing, yeah, they came to us and like the planning board, they came back to us and then.
That's right, when they come back, it's worth two punch shots.
That's it, oh, who didn't want to?
Yes, and then, any members of the public who got feedback? Since it does say tonight would possibly be a public hearing.
No, what does this is to continue it, I mean, then you're, no, to continue it to this day.
So we don't want comments next?
Well, she probably reached the other side of the room, sorry.
Yeah, until we hear back from the planning board.
The reason I asked is just a person waving their hand, wanting to come in.
We could certainly allow that. No, it's a hearing on the public, the public hearing on this ordinance. Samantha, Samantha, did you want to comment?
Sure, unless you think it's better for me to save my comments for the next hearing, that way I don't repeat.
I think you should probably make it to the planning board as well.
Oh, yeah, that might be useful. Oh, yeah, that might be useful.
Okay.
If it's short, why don't you say them tonight? That way if something happens, you don't show up at the next meeting.
Know what you said, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, I'm Samantha Ortiz. I'm on three sixty-six dash two Mendham Road. It's private road three sixty-six in Bernardsville. I have a couple of comments on the ADU situation where I compared against Maplewood and Princeton ADU laws and also my own experience with ADUs. So there's just a couple of points I wanted to make about the current provisions that I read for the proposal. So Bernardsville's proposal does not specify a single family unit. I think that's important. Our proposal does not specify utilizing the same driveway entrance, which is an issue that I've seen in the borough currently where there's ADUs that are then creating a new address and a new entrance. Essentially, they're no longer an ADU and it's a brand new house in the same property. Why are we allowing four people versus two or three in comparison to other towns similar to ours? Four people as an entire family versus the intention of aging in place or younger family members wanting a place to start out? That's a lot different, two or three people versus four people. Fifteen hundred square feet was our maximum that was listed in the proposal. That's bigger than my first house in town. I think that's pretty large for an ADU. Other towns in comparison have limited to six hundred or eight hundred square feet. Many of us in R one and R one ten are on wells and septics. We need to be mindful of allowing the double, double the number of homes and families in the area due to service loading capacity. How does this affect private roads? I'm on a private road. We have five houses on our road where we all share the cost of the road. The borough does not pay for our road. Doubling the load on the road with a rental unit is a lot more cars and a lot more maintenance required from all of us. I propose the ADU has to be within certain proximity to the principal residence. People should not be able to build their ADU at the far end of the property where it doesn't affect them. I have an example near my home. They don't, the property owner doesn't have to see it or need to maintain it. They have the separate address that I called out before. Other towns mentioned design requirements to match the principal residence. I don't see that on Bernardsville's proposal. I think it should have to match or be similar to the primary residence. Financial gain question, are they allowed to rent to anyone? Short-term rentals, long-term rentals? Do they have to be to a family member? Are they allowed to make a profit? And then I did see Mayor Knoz responded to me on this one, but there will be an inspection process and rental registration. But I believe then that opens up to being able to, basically any property in the R one, R one ten zone with the proper amount of acreage could then create rental properties and continue renting. So ultimately, there's a big difference between aging in place ADU versus allowing rental homes and doubling the capacity in the R one and R one ten zones.
You know, Mayor, I don't want to break. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Samantha.
Is it, I know this has macerated and gone through various committees. I'm wondering if the straw tool was useful here. I know I'm personally against this. It seems we want to address the zoning requirements globally up there. That's a conversation. I would be a no against allowing ADUs, especially new ones.
Well, I think, yeah, I think this originally started with the goal because so many people have cottages on their properties already. And our old ordinance said that they could only be used by family members.
As non-rentals.
As not, yeah. And we know that a lot of people are renting them to outsiders. And they're not being inspected. And so then there's a safety issue if they're not reporting them, they're not being inspected. I think that was where it started. And then I think it maybe got bigger than we thought. It was supposed to originally address existing, yeah, structures, not.
Probably his own structures, his own use, yes. And that was a problem and how is he going to discuss that?
So right now, if someone said, I want to rent my existing barn, or whatever it is, to someone who's not a family member and doesn't work on his property, they're not allowed to.
They're not allowed.
Can they get a variance?
They could get a variance.
Then they have to spend.
And you couldn't qualify it as an accessory apartment or an affordable unit.
But you'd need to go to the warrant adjustment.
That's correct. But not if it's affordable, then. No, they could rent their entire residence, but they just can't separate the residence and rent pieces of it. Yes, correct. Except, as I said, it's a conditional use now.
Yeah. I know. So there's, yeah, there's, it gets complicated.
I know.
Because I think we weren't anticipating people building.
And personally, I've had a lot of issues with this. I have personal experience.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been trying to, as a borough, to prevent subdivision.
Well, then that's basically what's happening is there's an inversion.
Well, that's what we. But now we're authorized.
Add another driveway and. So is there a way can we change it to say only existing and then still have to go through that process with the zoning board if you wanted to?
Well, even a conditional use, if you need your conditions, you can do it.
That's true.
So, you could put more conditions in, you know, I think some groups in SRT is suggesting that if you want to pursue it, I'm not taking a position. You know, certainly proximity to the existing.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of these were planning issues, that, you know, that one certainly makes sense.
Why can't we just put existing structures?
Because we don't use it.
Right.
If something's on single family.
Okay, you can't just grandfather everything that is built before.
Because it would have, it would have had to have been built before the enactment of the zoning ordinance that limited it to single families, which is probably the first zoning ordinance in town.
So we can't say in the current ordinance that is right now today, we can't just say caretakers, family members, and, you know, special exceptions can be made for anything else.
Well, the last part of everything is a variance, so that's, you know, applies across the board. Yes, we could, we could take off the conditional use requirement and put those current conditional use standards into an ordinance, just saying legal if you, you know, meet these requirements.
How much is it for them to go for a variance?
It's a lot.
And it's time consuming too.
And the answer would probably be no. The answer would likely be no, because the laws are in place to make, to maintain it as a single family residence.
But that's not addressing all the ones that are right now being rented all the way down.
Well, that's an enforcement issue. If they leave the ordinance the way it is, then they're illegal.
And then how do you really say like, oh, this is a member of my family, like?
My second cousin twice removed.
By zoning off so hard, perhaps to be able to prove or dispute.
I think the issue is the collection of money.
Right.
Correct? Yeah, but, but I mean, even caretakers, they're paying for it. It's in addition to their salary. So their salary would be higher if they're paying rent.
Yeah. This was to go back to before, instead of taking the planning board's recommendation to make it.
Well, it's just quite a time since we scheduled it for a public hearing. Those of you on the planning board can take it back to the planning board. The planning board struggled and the reason why it didn't get decided or heard is the plan was like, what are you guys doing here? They recommended, but the point was, are you trying to rezone that zone to have multi-family residences? That's what he does. That was their recommendation.
It does say only one.
It says only one, but it's because they thought that the direction was that we were going to allow it. And I don't know if the.
But they, when it first went to them, they were fine with it and said, even make it looser, because they said to, don't, we don't need to go to them. So that's why it came back to us.
The original iteration of the ordinance just made it a permitted use as opposed to a conditional use with all the same standards. And they turned it back to us and say, you should consider, you know, opening it up to non-family members and non-caretakers. The whole, the whole concept came to them.
Alright, well, let's talk about Thursday and the board and if they come back.
Maybe Samantha's recommendation.
Is there, maybe before we go there, because this will be a negotiation of the planning board discussion. Is there a council opinion on what this ultimately looks like that will help shape that conversation? We, I think you can do that because you're going to still have the public hearing. Yeah, and do it here.
If you're gonna give the ability to build another house, then I would say.
Does anybody want to have the authority to build another structure for the purpose of renting?
No.
Okay, so let's walk through the various options. So that's a no.
That's a no.
Could we say to residents, if you're looking, if you're seeking this particular type of variance, the cost is reduced something like that? Like have a flat rate or something. If you have a parent or woman or a.
Yeah, the parents aren't the issue.
Yeah, you have a reason, a legitimate reason why you need to rent an accessory dwelling unit. You come before the zoning board and the flat rate is kind of.
But the M I U L sets the requirement, you know, you can't.
Yeah.
What were you going to say?
No, I'm just saying, it's, we're not addressing the ones that are in existence all over town that are not being inspected. That's, that's basically, we were trying to make them legal so that they would be inspected and safe and far apart would know that they were in existence in case anything happened. Everybody would know all about.
Well, let's go with it. Let's.
That's all we were trying to do.
So let's say somebody has a dwelling and for whatever reason they've decided to rent it in an unauthorized way. Do we want to make that legal?
Yes, I would like that. I would like them to be able to rent those.
How does everybody else feel?
I would.
Huh? You know, as I said, all along.
But that's the problem. If we do that, then we can't prevent anything else. We don't understand why.
I'm not sure that, I would say yes. I would say yes. I would say that we should change the law. We could change the inspection requirement. Caretakers got to do.
Exist. Oh, we could approve them. Can we do that?
Well, caretakers, it's almost not monetary compensation. It's part of their, you know, their compensation for being a caretaker.
So we could add that to the inspection. That's, I think that was the main concern is that they're not being inspected. So.
Now, I think clearly in the case of a caretaker, like I said, that's part of something that's super in a property. You get three grand and, you know, and the salary. And the salary is low because you get three grand. And that's true of a caretaker as well. But I don't think that, maybe I'm mishearing, the issue is not caretakers, it's people renting them.
To other people.
To other people.
For money.
And then, I guess, so.
Or family is primarily just living there.
Diane said that we should allow. I said we should. Mayor, you said that you should.
I wouldn't say we should because I want them inspected. But if there's another way to get them inspected, I don't really.
Okay, so you, what is it, what is everybody else? So, well, what I'm not clear on is I think if you say that you want the existing ones to be exempted, you're effectively saying we're going to allow new ones to be built. There's no way to limit that. That's part of the problem. So by saying yes to the second question, you're actually saying yes to the first. That's what the plan that it brought up.
Okay.
Which is not allowing is a second primary use on property.
It just seem wrong that just because you, someone bringing you to make the case you're already going off over here is why I'm not.
But the borough had the crackdown three or four years ago, two or three families.
Yeah.
Some of them have been in existence since, like, nineteen fifty-nine.
Right.
Nineteen fifty-eight, so it missed by a year, even though they had sixty years of use.
Okay, wait a minute then. What if the structure was built before such and such a date?
But the ordinance, to the best of my knowledge, the ordinance never allowed those structures to be rented out.
Right.
They were caretakers.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure.
That's not the way things really are right now. So I mean, you kind of got to move ahead a little bit. If we keep some kind of a, anything built between, before such and such a date.
But there are a lot of cases, we can't arbitrarily say, we can't say before the enactment of this ordinance. Because M I U L says non-conforming use is one that existed prior to the enactment of the ordinance that made it illegal.
So what they would add? That they need to be inspected. Any accessory dwelling on your property has to be inspected.
Well, the state law, let me check that. The state law that allowed us to impose the mental property inspections specifically talks about rental properties.
Right.
But that doesn't solve the issue that they're occupying. Look, I feel like we have to be consistent. We've been, as a borough, paying a lot of attention to multi-families that have been used illegally. Doesn't matter what zone. I don't think you can pick and choose the zone for that enforcement. Whether you're an enforcement enforcer or not. And I think it needs to be not looking at one zone or the other.
But we inspect those.
And we've been enforcing illegal multi-family use around the borough in other sense. Yeah, like I said, there was a crackdown four or five years ago now probably on two and three families and some of them have been there sixty years. The issue is they shouldn't be there.
You know, they've been there. Their cottage is on an estate.
They shouldn't be rented.
But they shouldn't be rented. So what should they just rob? What should they do? What should be done with them? I mean, it seems to me they're being used, they could be used for housing. Why can't they be used for housing?
If, if, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, if we want it to have a tenant, a lot of more instructors, it would be a two-family lot. Like I said at the beginning, we should adjust in terms of.
But if it's already there, that's what that'll.
Well, but you can't, that's the thing. You can't, you can't make that distinction. Zoning is using, it's having a uniform cross of this. Zoning has to be a hundred percent, one or the other.
If you live in a home that has an ADU.
Right.
That historically or whatever was used for a caretaker.
Yes.
And then you decide, I'm going to go live in the ADU and rent my house. You could do that.
You can do that. You've got two primary uses on one of the lots. The single, the single-family zone.
I think you have what council's desire held on, even if it's impossible, definitely. But like, I guess my point is, is there a, like, there's experts at this that are planning boards, any committee, or maybe even a subset of you with Samantha, like, maybe there's a group that could try to, you know, land a plan on this.
Yeah, maybe just for grammar. The plan. No, theirs is John Zabo.
Okay, so is every, just make sure what I'm asking for.
Yes.
If it exists and it's being rented, the council wants to, and I don't want to give any minority carry message, wants to allow it to be used as a multi-family lot.
No.
That's what we're saying. It's a multi-family, it's no longer a single-family lot. It's a multi-family lot.
No, it's already there and somebody's been living it.
But what I'm saying, it's right now, it's.
So we can inspect it and make sure it's safe.
Just, so how, like, this, this part, how is the inspected and make sure it's safe? Is that a problem right now? We have a lot of people where, like, I just, I'm just asking the question, right? I don't think anybody expects my house periodically to make sure it wasn't falling out of my head. I look at. Well, the difference is you're not a landlord. So if you're a. Okay, but I just, like, what I'm saying is, is this a, is this a real big issue that we've got to solve?
So if you decided that you were going to rent your single-family house.
Right.
Then I'd have to get. You would have to, you would have to register as a rental, as a rental, then you'd have to get it inspected. If you decided that you wanted to rent your single-family house and your shack, you would have to register as a multi-family house, because you can't, because you're in a single-family zone.
But I bought the house in a single-family zone, so I knew when I came in, when I was buying. And that's where I'm struggling with this, like, what are you trying to solve? That's where I am today. Because we've already, we're saying to other zones, you bought a house, it was zoned single-family, you want to use it multi-family, you can't.
Okay, this all came about because there was a resident who actually happened to live across the street from me. They had a house, they bought the house, it had an accessory dwelling behind it that was rented. It's been rented since I've lived there. She never rented it. The people who lived there before her never rented it, but it has been renovated and it was originally renovated, rented. And she wanted to know if she could rent it. Now, she probably could have just rented it and not told anybody and no one would have ever known or cared. However, she came to the meeting and decided to do the right thing and ask permission. That's where this all came about.
But you have to ask permission under the term of, of the zoning board.
Right. And I have the same issue across for me where they took the garage and made it, tried to make it into a house, then got caught and so made it into an apartment over the garage. But they went to the board of adjustment, then they got it approved, but they had to go through the board of adjustment. Well, then maybe we should just let them go through the board of adjustment.
What's happened in Houston, like Dr. Christine, is a marketer is the mayor, my wife moderated a talk by him, West.
What, what's happened in Princeton, like, Dr. Christine, but is, is a marketer is the mayor, my wife moderated a job by him, Weston's a mayor. And what's happened is their idea was they wanted to provide middle income, not low income, having undercover, but what's happening in Princeton is you're getting very rich people and poor people, so they wanted to, what happened is builders would buy a lot, knock down these houses, build two new houses. And they allowed, they allowed any zone. You know, high density zone everywhere, so, you know.
That, that could be, the way this, this is currently written, that could be a consequence passing the legislation.
I don't disagree.
Well, then maybe we should just let them go through the board of adjustment.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. And just pull the whole thing.
And if it turns into like ten, twenty people that want to do this.
Then they'll go to the board of justice.
We address it again.
Right, you're saying if there's a.
If there's a real, like, Jason.
But that's what we made sense. That's what made the two and three family. Drop it in here.
Right.
Okay. What, what do you want to do with that? So we want to pull it?
So we want to pull it and if they want to rent it, they have to go to the board of adjustment.
Well, I think simply advertise the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But, so I would, I, I think it's a great idea to plan for it. It's not going to pass, when it goes back to the council.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask the planning board the questions that we just asked, if they have, they are only testing the solution.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if they don't, then, yeah.
And, and thirteen sentences, no one wants to open up that whole zone.
No, 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 that wasn't at all the intention.
On their property and sell them.
No, we do not. All right, moving on.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you for taking that out of the planning board. Um, I will open a public hearing on, we did vote on that, right?
Yes.
I'll open a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen eighty-five, amending ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen seventy-seven, which appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand for library building, public restrooms renovations. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All right, um. Dre, you want to go back?
I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen eighty-five, that final reading and adopted publicly.
Exactly. Roll call, please.
We asked questions before, could we get?
Sure.
Just straight to our families, it means eight four five, all right, very. Are you sure you must spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the back?
It's on four bathrooms and it's the lowest bid by far, but when it's.
You guys are bound by her food price, correct?
prevailing, welding, all that.
Sorry, it's.
We don't have to.
That's good.
It gotta be good.
We have to watch this, yeah. I gotta say, what they. All right. Roll call, please.
Sister Anne White?
Yes.
Sister Greenfield?
Yes.
Sister McGreen?
Yes.
Sister McGreen?
No, I wouldn't, yes.
Sister Mara?
Yes.
Sister Matt?
Yeah.
All right, the next ordinance is to amending, we're just introducing it to amend salary ordinance for its, uh, the new positions we've created with fire and inspectors and whatever, so, um. Who's watching this?
I move ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen eighty-six. An ordinance amending salary ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen eighty-five. We use by title, passed on first rate and published according to law. And that a public hearing be scheduled immediately beginning at seven P M, Monday, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second. All in favor, uh, proposed? All right, moving on to resolutions, um. I mean, we want to talk about, you know, twenty-three two nineteen, that is at the corner of Prospect and Mount Mary, and thank you Nancy for the use of the county to get that in, that is a tough spot for the children crossing going to school, so that will be a big, um, did they give us any timeline on that?
Gentlemen, I, I, I don't remember if it's, um, probably. Not right, super fast, but I think he's, I think it was next year. Okay, so we'd have to wait until next year.
It was definitely next year.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
All right, but thank you for putting me in that, yeah. Two twenty-four, what is this additional money for? Um, for N W, I think number one, they came to more meetings than they originally intended to. Um, and they will also, I think we're using them for using the bounty to look at that throw for off.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I, I, that's what I thought, I just didn't want to ensure.
The development fees.
Okay, yeah, and it'll go back to. Any other questions on resolutions?
N W Financial, see, we have to, on stage one.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, excellent. Um, okay. Somebody like to introduce to me? I'll do it. I'll move that resolutions twenty-three dash two sixteen through twenty-three dash two twenty-eight be adopted.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Sister Mara?
Yes.
Sister Mara?
Yes.
Sister McGreen?
Yeah.
Sister McGreen?
Yes.
Sister Greenfield?
Yes.
Sister Anne White?
Yeah.
All right. Mayor's update, um, I attended the city lunch, which is part of the business partnership, it's the Economic Legislative Committee. And, um, Colleen Marr, who is the county administrator, was the guest speaker. And she was highlighting, um, what's so wonderful about Somerset County, and she mentioned David Burke. So we got, we made a list for the, the place to come in Somerset County. Uh, we had the trucker treat on the twenty-eighth, which was incredibly well attended. You were there.
Yes.
And you were there.
Street conference.
Yeah, the Park's first trucker treat. We had the river cutting on November second at the Red Horse, um, Al and Diane. You were there. Um, it was a great event, a lot of press coverage too, I mean, it was, and we all got to meet David Burke, nice guy. Has a lot of good ideas for that property and other properties, so exciting. Um, at the Ford, back in time, at Upton Time, and we had about a hundred and fifty people there, it was really, a lot of good feedback, I think people had a really good time. So, um, that's done. Just, I mentioning, we were talking today, um, of trying to do a parade for the football team. You know, we've done that in the past with the fire trucks, and they ride around town, blow the whistles, and it's, it's just, you know, an incredible record that they have. Um, so I was circulating that with the fire department and the police and the superintendent, and they actually said, you know, we've had so many good teams.
Yeah.
This year, it's kind of hard, limited, because I just went through, um, like, the girls' field hockey won the thirteen division championship, which was the first time in eighteen years. Boys soccer made the S C I A A finals for the third year in a row, and their first sectional title in four years. Girls tennis won the round of division championship and North two, Group two state sectional championship. Um, the cross-country girls won the valley division title. The boys' cross-country, round of division title, their first ever Skyland Conference championship. You know, how do we celebrate? All of them, it's just like, wow. Uh, for a small town and a fairly small high school, those are pretty impressive, uh, teams. But we'll see if we can put together, kind of connecting with all those people, to do some kind of a celebration for the sports. Yeah. Um, Nancy and I will be at the league conference Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday this week. Um, and with Jeff Hammond will be accepting, thanks to his hard work, our Sustainable Jersey Bronx Award on Tuesday at the Sustainable Jersey luncheon. Uh, did you get the flag?
Got it.
All right. Uh, and that's my report. Oh, no, I did have a letter from Mike Spagnola thanking the police, which I thought I'd just share with you, for, um, Halloween night in, in the, the Loop neighborhood there, they closed some of the roads, they had an amazing presence. They were just, they were having fun, I think, but they gave out, you know, the, the necklaces and with the lights on them and just kept the traffic out, and, and they did a super job, and it was nice for them to get a letter from the residents saying how pleased they were, so. Always nice to recognize our police. All right, that's me. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to follow on the, um, park mobile discussion that we had at the last meeting. Um, it takes a bit of time to get everything in order, so, um, our plan for the train station is to implement it after first quarter, so in April. Um, so we're going to sell the decal, just as we normally would, and then after we're uprunning, people could sign up for a dollar just to get a park mobile, and they still want to find out more about what your benefits are, like, if you got your decal, why do you sign up? Maybe go call me, or, you know, I'm not exactly sure why they'd sign up after they are in the decal, but I'll find out. But I just want to let you know that we'll be working to get everything at least ready.
Now, we have to discuss fees and all the other things, you're right.
Yeah. Um, that would get closer. Um, and then, uh, the tax blogger had the, our tax sale on, uh, November eighth at ten A M here in this room, uh, ten lien, Rourville sale. Two properties had the liquid twenty twenty-two taxes, and nine had delinquent twenty twenty-two sewer taxes. Um, the, uh, borough, we sold all of them, so we did not have to acquire any of the liens at sale. Um, they were sold for between the sale and the premiums collected, the total net collected on the day, it sold a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars in taxes. So, it's a good thing we sell them all.
Yeah.
And it's good, maybe they'll start with everything. Yeah. That's all.
Great, thank you. Um, we did have a request for the twenty twenty-four winters market for the sign to be up more than two weeks. Um, I guess that's the sandwich for it. Uh, anyone have a problem with that?
No.
You good? All right, we will approve that. Um, and then we have, uh, we have two next things, people, with the library family needs to get their board back up to full count. So we do have, um, two to be approved. Oh, yes, Robert Reed and Joan Condes. Oh, there it is, okay, so, um, Jay, you're in our library first, what can you do?
I'm going to confirm the mayor's appointment to Robert Reed and Joan Condes, the library board trustees.
I'll second. All in favor?
All right.
Oh, right, you have two new members.
Karen would be helpful.
Yeah, right. Um.
Construction fees. We want to talk about these. This is also a call a couple meetings ago.
Yeah.
Um, I had, I had given you the proposing, which is that the construction control requested, and you'd asked for what percent increase. It, it would be what, what we bring, have brought in based on last year's fees. So he estimated it was twenty-eight percent, uh, a twenty-eight percent increase, which the calculation is additional sixty-eight thousand three hundred, the two dollars, so, um, what that would mean is we would have around three hundred and twelve thousand five fifteen, our expenses were three seventy-two, seven ninety-three, so it's still a loss of like sixty thousand dollars, but it would not be as big of a loss. And then, those, those are the flux rate of year, depending on how much development you have, uh, but that's what it would have been.
And they haven't been changed since two thousand seventeen.
Um, I think it was longer than that.
Was it?
Yeah.
Rather.
Eleven?
Yeah, because I know that Chris said that he had worked in it for eight years and may have.
Oh, they haven't changed it yet.
By statute, they're supposed to be.
It's supposed to.
It's supposed to pay.
Breakthrough statement, Rick. So how do we get to break even?
Um, well, you get to break even when you have more development, which we're not going to have, so that would be helpful. Um, I mean, if you really want to get to break even, you go lower your expenses or increase your revenue, um, you know, I think this is a good start without uh, really hurting the regular residents or putting the water or whatever. I think this will go a long way, so what I'd like to suggest is that we, we increase the fees at the levels that the, uh, construction official requested, and then we rebuild it next year and see how we end up.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I mean, and really, even though you're saying twenty-eight percent, it's, it's not, like, you're going from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars for, you know, a garbage disposal, it's not like.
It was from last meeting check, when we have that.
Uh.
Provider provider.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at the fact that it's fine.
So they're, they're not gigantic fees to begin with.
The, the fees themselves are individually going up by that much.
Yeah.
Um. So I don't think that, uh, the average person is kind of really, I mean, people, people often complain when fees go up. It's just, you know, maybe they do, but I don't think any of them are, are really unreasonable.
They're not, you know. I'm just looking at the list.
Did they, um, a list of comparables from the neighboring town that you may know?
Okay. Would you, you see them?
No, that's also important.
So we want to put this on for the next agenda as a resolution? Um, it would be, I'm, I'm sorry, I was just having on.
Yeah.
I want to add me more, amending comparables.
I, I do, because I think what the issue is, if you need them to come out, right, and do anything, fifteen dollars doesn't even get them in a car.
Oh, we're fixing to do more. Well, yeah, let's just, if we look at a couple of other towns and see what they are charging for these same services, we might find that we're really we're not charging a lot.
I think that's what Chris did though, isn't it?
Or we might.
Well, Chris charged him too much.
I, which county went to, but he did look at it, now it's.
Okay.
I think he was the firm, and he was the firm, so he really did that. Okay, so let's put the orders over this. Agenda.
Okay.
Because that, I think it's our last chance to do it, because it's.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And I would challenge him from that, but I hope to take a strong, like, fifteen, fifteen dollars and go table.
I think he'd be happy with you that.
Obviously, it's a reality, like.
Yeah.
For somebody to be there.
Uh, we don't have any correspondence, any unfinished, unfinished business. I know, Jack, you had something for new business.
Yes. Doug Walker contacted me in connection with the side law, should be reconstructing property in Durham, Durham and Red Street. Uh, they need, there's a small vacant block area in the city.
On board on the terrace?
Right, and firstly, he asked me to try to get an easement from a woman, and then he worked it up, and the assessment's on twelve hundred dollars, to see if she fell up to it. But she will sell this for fifteen hundred dollars, but if you go ahead and do, depends on the essence. So if you agree and did send a regular demand to me.
Yeah.
You, you are, um, I would ask that you let, you adopt it, just authorize the, uh, the purchase for six, fifteen hundred dollars.
I'll move Jack's today.
Twenty-three two twenty-nine?
Twenty-three two twenty-nine, yeah.
Thanks.
I'll second for the fifteen hundred. Okay, uh, roll call.
Sister Anne White?
Yes.
Sister Greenfield?
Yes.
Sister McGreen?
Yes.
Sister McMeem?
Yes.
Sister Romero?
Yes.
Sister Mara?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, um, we're talking, we have a meeting scheduled for the day after Christmas on the calendar, is that an issue?
Actually, for the first, it's not an issue for me this year. My, it's my wife.
Your kids.
Is that, is that what they died of?
Tuesday.
Tuesday night.
Can we do it virtual?
We can do it virtually, I think.
I mean, in the past, we moved to special meeting the week before the holiday for any, to move any bills, is there any of that in the business?
We can, can you send it to you?
No, you can't.
No, I'm gonna do it at eight A M in the morning.
Can we do a, a phone call?
I.
Or a virtual short, just to.
I, I think we approved the bills for the holiday.
I just want to do that.
No, we don't. We get it just casually.
Right. We did, we just have to give me a bill.
So can we do the bills, like, at eight thirty meeting in the morning, the week before?
Yeah. Well, we, we're, uh, yeah. No, but we perform now, I, I, I can do the week, I can do the twenty-sixth, I can work.
Oh, boy. Well, we can still do it on the twenty-sixth, it's just maybe it's been on and off, can I approve the bills and we're off?
Yeah, I'm, I'm around.
I mean, if.
We have four people around.
All right, I mean, I'm like, we're. Yeah, let's do this. Yeah.
Yeah, we can just, cause you guys, are you guys working? That's it.
Yeah.
So I need to be during working hours, whatever.
We can do it for
The twenty-sixth, I can do that.
Yeah, so if they notice a special hearing, since we change the time, but that's not a big deal.
Okay, they don't have to do it at the crack of dawn.
Can I zoom on the end of the grid?
Yeah, just to, yeah, for people to hold.
Okay, some of the other times
Let people off, they'll sleep in.
Oh, yes. That's good, I put the time, I, I, I'm gonna know, I'm gonna know the time.
Two o'clock. Which day? Yeah, good luck. Civilized hour. So two o'clock? Yeah, maybe ten minutes, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, and anything with, um, next next year, we're just, because usually we start working on the calendar about now for the next meetings, and we must remember um, not before we mess that up this year. Um, and we were supposed to start in January, and we had the rough meetings and the open meetings, so did we wanna do them, I think, one after the other, or are we still doing every other, every two weeks?
So it comes pretty recent, but we can probably start a few.
Stuff crops on to the agenda the four days that we have, so, yeah.
I mean, I would say keep it to two weeks.
No, I'd say do the week, because that's what happens and stuff, more stuff
That's what happened last time. It was two weeks after a while and then it
So it'd be working session and then Monday event. Where is that then?
That, that's where
Meetings that off for forty weeks, then working session. I'm okay with that. Actually, that may make my life easier. It sure was a very good meeting.
Well, that's
I like that even better.
Yeah.
So we're talking about doing two consecutive Mondays and then taking three weeks off and then two consecutive Mondays.
Well, it's kinda bad.
Yeah, cause then, yeah, some weeks are, some months are
I think it's two. If you Monday, Monday, two Mondays off, Monday, Monday, two Mondays off, and sometimes you get a third Monday.
Right.
So we get a, sort of like a special gift when you get an extra, an extra evening or pay. Yes. No, there you go.
Um, I like how you've pushed it towards later in the month though, because of the bills, you know, you don't wanna be too early like the third and the fourth?
I like the idea of dedic, making more dedicated sessions than we have.
Oh, um, or is that, no, or
We're just, the first, the third Monday on the month.
So that's Or you even talked about availability. Well, no, you know
Million merit.
Yeah, so we could, there on the third and here on the fourth.
Yeah.
Do you wanna just, can we just look at, you know, committees and boards and just make sure that this, where's the word of help is? Now, it's every other month, that is a Monday. I mean, that probably won't be that big of a conflict, but just before we
Yeah.
codify, just take a look at
Might have to change to Tuesdays.
Right, that's true.
Well, like
No, 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 like the other board.
Of course, all right.
Charter of authority, if you decide anything.
Yeah.
We get first pay.
You get first pay.
All right, so something to think about, so we'll just check with the other boards, because we have some time yet, and we, we need to have it for the reorganization, right? Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, last item, floating solar farm. Uh,
Don't worry about this.
No, well, I don't know much about it either, but it is an idea that came to, you know, public works meeting. Uh, essentially the quarry finding the water back here, gotta do it on the sea.
Mm-hmm.
Could potentially be a solar farm. And, um, it does require a very big investment. And Nancy probably knows way more about this than I do. But
I mean, for that, that's general, you know, us.
We talked about it, public works, and we, we had some questions which were answered, and I'll let Janet talk.
My understanding was that since we, we did present the concept, which came down to the green team, that's been percolating for a few years and, and other people talking about it as well. And we presented it to the administrator and to Doug, and then, uh, sent you some material that you sent to the public works committee. My understanding was, I guess you were gonna introduce it here to see whether you wanted it more full, if the public works committee gave us blessing to give a more full presentation to the whole council about it. So that was, uh, my understanding was what's gonna transpire tonight. Well, the idea behind it, and I don't wanna get ahead of, of our formal presentation, is that, uh, uh, and, and this is not something new, it's been done in Sayerville and other locations as well, but since we have this quarry, which is unutilized space, um, that's out of sight, so there's nothing that's gonna be aesthetically intrusive. Um, we can't put solar, uh, floating solar panels on that quarry. In fact, it, it's, it's actually advantageous to be on water, because the cooling effect of the water makes it more efficient, as opposed to being on land. Um, and, uh, it, there would need to be some sort of bonding, but the opportunity here is, is good, because we can get one-third of the money back from the feds under the, um, uh, I forgot the name of the act, but it's the, uh, infrastructure act. Um, we can get one-third of the money, now, it, it, it sounds like a big number, it's, it's approximately eight million dollars. But it's not all at one time, and in fact, what you do is you leverage the money that you're generating from the electricity towards the payments, so in fact, out of pocket, it's not that bad, and you reach parity at, at about six years, and then you start making money, so that at the end of twenty years, you won't have to bond for roads ever again, let's put it that way. Uh, the, the, the dollars work out for various benefit. Nancy can speak to that, uh, as well, but what we'd like to do, we'll be able to make a, 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 a formal presentation, give you spreadsheets and, and, uh, tell you about our concept. And we won't hear anything, there's the quarry, there's the quarry owners. Well, we have to decent present, we'll have to work out at a rate, we don't own the quarry, obviously.
Are they amenable to this, have they been contacted?
No, they haven't approached the subject with it yet.
Uh, I think that Jeff is trying to see if there's interest from the council to present a presentation to everyone about it.
Well, I know, but I think it's a good point, we don't really know if the party's been willing to sell it.
It's gonna be in the paper.
Well, we
It, it, it's a good business deal for them, I mean, they're, we're gonna lease it, you know, from them, and we'll be able to supply them the energy they need to run whatever they can over their condos. They would pay for all the, um, municipal use in terms of energy with something left over. And since we have the proximity of a substation at the end of the top of Pil Hill, we could run it up to that, and actually, it could be advantageous for our affordable housing, but it, there, there's a lot of aspects of this that is a win-win for all parties, so what we really need to do is see if there's an interest on behalf of the council, then we can approach the quarry owners. I, I'm, I'm, every, I know three people, all that own farms in New Jersey, that have done solar, solar panel with the thought of it being caught positive, and all three of them have made terrible business decisions. I mean, what terrible business decision, because the rate change, the efficiency of the solar panels, all of them gotten, um, installed.
Yes, right.
So I, 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 I know three farms, all four farms, and all three of them, it was one who almost put the farms out of business. Let's make a presentation to him. I'm a little, right, I'm coming from a place of negativity.
I'm shocked.
And, and, and one that's mentioned, the eight million dollar number just rolled about.
Well, you know, being transparent.
Well,
And so, uh, I'm boss.
Oh, there's, there's the expert right there.
Um, so, s, the, the solar systems are basically, what the, the, the goal is to have the electricity where the town consumes offset a hundred percent. You would be basically breathing, in the, in the sense that, uh, uh, you would have all your consumption offset by what has been consumed. We, I talked to, uh, some people in the past, you know, in the construction department, as to what consumption is. About three and a half million kilowatt hours per year. This system would be designed somewhere near that or above that, go with your five megawatt system, somewhere near or less. Um, the state has just implemented a new program called Community Solar, which allows for providing electricity to, uh, low-income scenarios, to, uh, in towns. So as she had just mentioned, that would be one facet where we, we have, like, if we do have some communities that are lower income than we have, could get able to offsetting their consumption basically. Um, via that program. Uh, income, there are four things that usually, um, uh, make the, uh, payback period very short. Your income off the system as an owner, so the borough is the owner of the system, I don't know the situation with, with the farms, it was a third-party scenario, then you do not, yeah, they were not owners, they were
No, they didn't want to sell them themselves. With, they
Well, through somebody, they sold it, right. Uh, and then it depends on how long ago, if it was back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, the S-Rex plummeted down. And the economics may not have worked at that time, they went back up again. Um, most of the systems I've installed, uh, of, of numerous systems, uh, the payback period is usually when the owner buys the system and installs it in about three to five years max. And after that, it's all great, and then where you have, um, uh, the four aspects of ownership is they are basically, uh, a tax credit, which is not applicable here, because um, it's a tax-exempt entity. Um, you have the electricity savings, you have the income off the system. Um, and then you have depreciation, which I'm not a place insured, you talked about this, whether the pound it's a capital expenditure, where you can
Appreciate your money, appreciate the equity, but that's also, that's, that's all of the taxes, so
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, you know, that, I mean, that's a good indication, I'm but just from the, um, aspect of income, maybe the S-Rex and the electricity savings, because you're not shelling that money out every year, you're generating approximately, just from what we, what calculation we've done, about nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, it's probably a little more depending on the equipment that's used, the efficiency, again, is gonna be enhanced, because you're over water. Uh, it's a cooling effect, your panels operate much better in a cooling environment than a deep environment. Just common sense of how electricity works. Um, so you're gonna have a minimum, uh, system that generates nine hundred thousand a year for fifteen years, the income is about fifteen years and stay in that, or that was recently changed. So for nine, fifteen years, nine hundred thousand plus, you're gonna be generating those amount of money, basically, after your payback period. Now, I think, in a normal circumstance, what I've seen is your initial investment gets, when you own the system, um, get, uh, the amount that you're gonna be generating is about two and a half times plus your initial investment, so let's say it's, you invest, I think, most, uh, twelve million, somewhere around there. Thirty percent comes back under the Inflation Reduction Act for municipalities, the tax-exempt entities, you get a thirty percent direct pay. So you get payment on the federal government under the IRA for that amount, so that brings that total sum down to eight, eight and a half, somewhere around there. That, uh, gets then paid down, however, the bond interest is done, I don't know that, how that, like, this calculated works and so forth. But that, um, income now generation will be able, be able to be used to pay down your debt and have extra income over twenty years. Like the system, twenty-five plus years, thirty years.
We're, we're, we're kinda giving the presentation before
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, hopefully, we've intrigued you enough, but I mean, what we'd like, I'd like to do is have us come back and, and do this. You, you, you kinda got the presentation light, like, in a formal way.
Sorry.
Present you with the spreadsheets, the photos, et cetera, and, and, and then be able to answer your questions and, and, and address any concerns.
Can we invite the owner of property also, at least, to come in here? Presentation, I don't like to talk about somebody's property that you don't even know.
Well, I think, I don't
At least we, within the courtesy to invite them.
We, we wanna present it, well, we're talking, rocking a hard place, we, if, if you're intrigued by the idea, I'd like to be able to present the owners with the idea beforehand, I don't want them to come here in Eric for the first time here.
No, they're gonna read it in the paper, because you have
Yeah.
That would be, yes, so
This got a little bit out of
Contact them, ask them
And I think it's multiple owners, it's not just one owner.
Uh, even
There are multiple owners, but somebody owns the, the actual
And the owner.
Man, did you find out what, so I, I heard, I heard numbers, eight, twelve million?
No, it's twelve million, then you get the rebate back and break this out, give that
So we'd have, we'd have to have, carry a note of eight million dollars.
Yeah, right.
Around that.
Yeah, but you pay it off with the income that you're bringing. I mean, I think a presentation is definitely more
Yeah, yeah.
I, but I think maybe to avoid our feelings or whatever, if you authorize them to go talk to the quarry owner before, before the paper comes out.
That's not likely to happen, though.
Yeah. Then, um, at least you'll know if they're interested before you come back here, um.
I think the wording is that if I'm not pretty much saying, I'm reporting to council, and you're giving them courtesy that you're talking about the property.
I think it's just hard to do. Like, in other places, like, there's one, um, that was given to us, the one in Shornos. There's a reservoir owned by a New Jersey American owner. So they own the reservoir, and like, that's a little bit more cut and dry. So if you went to the quarry owner and said, hey, we're gonna make however much money per year, or your fund, are you okay with that? I mean, that's a big business.
No, they don't want some money.
I'm saying, why are we gonna have the money if they own it, that's what I wanna understand.
They're not, it's not getting a half-baker, so they're not paying any taxes on that area at all. It's taxes, it's not only taxes exempt, but there's no income or liability that they have against that area square footage. Um, so, I mean, I think to them, it's gonna be a positive, whatever your arrangement, so it's a win.
Yeah, it's not gonna be gratis, they're not, they're not, they're, they're not just saying, here, take it, and, and quite frankly, we can present the idea to them, and they can say, hey, we'd like to do it ourselves, and more power to them, if they think they could do it.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, for them, if they're gonna be able to lease us the, the property, they get something out of it, that we, we provide them the, uh, energy, makes it takes that off their expenses. It's not like they're coming away with nothing, it's a negotiation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and they wouldn't get that credit, right? So they wouldn't get the three million dollar credit.
No, well, it goes to the borough.
Yeah, so they'd have to put a bill, call it out, which is kind of tough for anybody.
Yeah.
So, I mean, uh, I think it's worth talking to them.
Definitely, but I, I would think, you know, like, maybe tomorrow or Wednesday, you could go
Well, tomorrow I'm gonna be with you in Minneapolis.
Yeah, um, and just say that you, or somebody from the committee, that just let them know that, you know, you're gonna propose this, and wondering if they're amenable to it. If, if it's even worth it, because, yeah, I don't want
Okay, we'll do that.
Read about it first, and, you know, then we'll be happy to hear. If they're open to it, um, then invite them to the presentation, and we'll
Yeah, sure, I mean, and, and I guess this is the chicken and egg, so you, you have to, you know, we couldn't go to the borough necessarily, if they said, we're not interested, we couldn't go to them, if the borough says we're not interested, who do you go to first?
And they don't know that.
They kind of do you, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, you know, Barry, if you reach out to them and they say, sure, we'll talk, then you come back here, and maybe we have them also come and hear the whole thing. Call them, yeah. Yes, um, I, I would like this for, uh, Councilman McQueen to give me those three people, I think, um, because I think that, uh
You can find Robert. Yeah, sixteen horse farm, um, west of here.
Okay, I, I'm not doubting what you're saying, I'm just saying that if we're going to really address this in a problem-solving, finding a solution, we need to know precisely why
I can be exact
Yeah.
Well, I'd be exact, is this actually, so, you can find Robert.
Okay, with the other two and a half, you wanna leave your brother out?
The, the, the issues are as follows, um, they were installed about ten to twelve years ago. They were installed with the promise of selling back to the grid and having revenue, uh, from the grid for excess generation. Um, the, the panels that were installed aren't generating sufficient energy, and ultimately, it's not even covering, in all three circumstances, the energy used upon, not to mention any drawbacks.
But you see what I'm asking, is you really know this, you need to know the size of the panels and that, so we don't know if that was engineered correctly, or if the numbers are right, but if you tell us and we interview, we'll know, otherwise, how do we consider the negative?
I said, this is a terrible idea, to me. Um, as a businessman, you're installing expensive equipment without any guarantee of return. Um, there are variables that you can't control, and it was proven right, and I remember that exact conversation I had with Adam's farm. So I'm coming from a place of extreme So I'm coming from a place of extreme negativity. I think spending that kind of money on eight million dollars on equipment, that becomes obsolete quickly, standards change. Um, is a risk, and it's eighty million dollars.
There's a risk, because we don't know where the energy costs are gonna go either, so.
True.
Anybody else have anything you, when you're open to having?
Yeah, I'll, I'll hear another, I'd like to hear.
I don't know much about it, so I'm fine with hearing it.
Okay.
Well, let's put that in, because we've already gone from negativity to extreme negativity, so I don't want to get to the next level. I, I'm talking, I'm willing to listen, but I mean, I might pass it to you and say, I have suggestions.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's our first count, so.
Yes.
Three, three questions. Are those three solar system installers still in business?
I don't know. I haven't asked that question.
Yeah, because there were, there were some bad installers.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. I meant, we need the information. Yeah, all right, good. Okay, um. I guess we're gonna have a face sent here. Or a number of personnel anticipating with a new, or for the acquisition, and I think we're gonna be, correct? Are we coming out? We're not, we're having. Okay. Uh, move to Henry's second.
I'm stuck.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you, folks.